All right, it is seven oh nine. I'm gonna call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. First off, apologies for the slight delay. We have a new A V system and we are still trying to get it all coordinated correctly. But we are good to go for now with what we have. So our first item of business is gonna be the pleasure of allegiance and I'll ask selecting Musket.
The United States of America and to the Republican Republicans. One nation under God, in the vision of liberty and justice for all.
All members of the Board of Selectmen are here at present. Our next item of business is the approval of the meeting minutes from July eleventh there in your packet. Are there any corrections? Motion has been made and seconded. Are there corrections? I have one. On page seven, it's uh seven, seven H. The discussion and possible vote on the East Windsor Solar Two appeal. It it should list me as having voted no. But that's that correction be listed. I don't have any other corrections. Anyone else? All in favor? Opposed? Page seven, yeah, under each. Right, public participation. This is one of two member, two opportunities for members of the public to address the Board of Selectmen. I'll first ask if there's anybody here in the room who would like to address the board and then I'll get provide the same opportunity to anybody who is with us online. Is there anyone in the room who would like to address the members of the Board of Selectmen? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Paul in eighty-nine Main Street, Broadbrook. I noticed there was a item in the package. Looked like a tax payment receipt with a swastika on it.
Yes.
Um, swastika hasn't been in use for thousands of years. Coca-Cola used it on their products. Carlsberg used it on their beer bottles. The Boy Scouts adopted it. Girls Club of America called their magazine Swastika. They sent out swastika badges to their young readers as a prize for selling them. World War One, American military units uh used the swastika as a symbol. And in late nineteen thirty-nine, they were on RAF airplanes. So Hitler stole it for his own purposes.
Happens all the time in history.
Would you? I understand that.
The Gadsden flag is a good example of that as well.
But it's nothing new. So uh I'm not, that's all. It's just information. That's as far as it goes. I'm not justifying anything. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Is there anyone online who would like to address the members of the board? If so, please state your name, your address, and state your business. Asking a second time? And a third time. Okay, we will move on. Um, actually this dovetails into Mr. Anderson's comments. The town was in receipt of a taxpayer submitting their tax bill on the back of which had a swastika identified. Uh, this man made no consideration whatsoever of the employee or her religious affiliation or any other religious affiliations of any other employee in the town hall. That is, despite Paul's historical references there, it is universally understood in the modern era to be a sign of hate. Um, that is highly offensive. It is disgusting. No employee or anybody should be subjected to that, um, to any type of hate speech at any time or anywhere. And it cannot be condoned, excused, or tolerated. Um, and I'm sharing that to to illustrate what it is that public employees have to go through. They should not be subjected to that and it won't, we simply are not going to put up with it here. And with that thought in mind, that gets to what happens to be the month of August, which is civility. Um, and so I have a proclamation that I'm going to sign and file that indicates that uh the town of East Windsor does recognize and encourages civility in the public discourse and it reads as follows. Whereas the open exchange of public discourse is essential to the democratic system of government. Whereas a cornerstone of democracy, Americans have observed certain rules of behavior generally known as civility. And whereas displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, and a lack of respect and personal attacks detract from the open exchange of ideas. Prevent fair discussion of the issues and can discourage individuals from participation in government. Whereas civility can assist in the reaching consensus on diverse issues and allow uh for mutually mutually respectful ongoing relationships. Whereas civility can uplift our daily life and make it more pleasant to live in an organized society. And whereas civility is needed now more than ever. Whereas everyone is urged to recognize, appreciate, and exercise civility. Now therefore, the town of East Windsor recognizes the month of August as national civility. That's gonna be submitted for this month.
Say something about that?
Sure.
It goes beyond just the swastika sign that was put there. And it's not just him. It's a lot of people are using Facebook. Embarrass, insult, and disrespect both workers, private individuals, this this board. Um, so I agree with what's here. It's okay to disagree and have differences of opinion, but it's another to degrade. Corn games, go in front of somebody's yard, looking in their yard, thinking you're not home for whatever reason. That's all disrespect. So I'm glad it's coming to surface because we need to be adults and act like adults. We can't continue to act the way things have been acting. And it's not just that one individual. There's a lot of people, um, but certainly not the workers at Town Hall. Um, so, um, Jason's right. The workers at Town Hall deserve the respect that they deserve. Cause I feel there isn't anybody um at Town Hall that's not doing their job, not doing anything. So thank you, Jason, for that.
Thank you. All right, we'll move along. We have a number of reappointments and some new appointments. Sure exciting. Um. These are kinda all over the place in terms of the boards around. So let's take them maybe either individually or clustered.
Move to reappoint one rightly to the Agricultural Commission as a regular member for a term expiring August first, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Uh, Michael Pillion.
Motion to appoint Michael Billion to Building Commission, regular member for a term expiring August one, twenty thirty.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Wayne Sherry.
To the Building Commission as a regular member for a term expiring August first, twenty thirty.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Keith, I didn't hear your vote.
Oh, I said aye.
Robert Leach.
With the motion to reappoint. Robert Leach, Capital Improvement Planning Committee, regular member for a term expiring July twenty, uh, thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So carried. Denise Bernard.
Why don't we do these next four together?
By my means.
Well, I would make a motion to. Um, reappoint Denise Menard, Adam Meehan, Heather Spencer, and David Swain to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, regular members. For terms expiring July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The appointments are so. Uh, we have some new appointments. Um, so first of all, um, thanks to Gil Hayes, who had served as the town of East Windsor's representative on the Greater Hartford Transit District for many years. Um, Gil was um very instrumental and fierce advocate for bringing uh transit opportunities to East Windsor. Um, and just this March, we had an opportunity to see that in the expansion of the micro transit program through D O T into parts of Broadbrook and Warehouse Point. Would not have happened without Gil's advocacy and um after his many years, he took that as an opportunity to say, uh, probably time to give somebody else a turn. And we're grateful that um James Roy, uh, who is uh one of our part-time drivers at the Senior Center and a volunteer firefighter at the Broadway Fire Department. Um, has agreed to serve in that capacity. James is here for anybody who does not know him. James, thank you for stepping forward. Um, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to appoint James Roy to the Greater Hartford Transit District, regular member for a term expiring August hundred twenty twenty-eight.
Again.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion?
Uh, yeah, just on the. Gil's turn, we go on and Gil.
Yeah.
Wouldn't this turn go there? See, I did yours. Turn the face. Oh, two, oh, one, twenty-seven.
Yeah? I'll say yes. Thirty-eight. Actually, I'm not sure about that. Because of the effective date of when it joined, but. I'm I'm fine with satisfying it to the end field term.
And then much like we didn't come up, or I don't remember who it's on.
So Carl is Carl von Eisenbrine. Who uh works with us at the Senior Center. Uh, Martin, can you, uh, James, can you explain, uh, who is, who was your second reference, the South Windsor reference? Yeah.
Who?
Oh, she lives in Windsor Lox. Okay, it was Melissa, it was Melissa Maltese.
I know, that, that was my error. I tried to catch it, but it was already gone.
Yep.
You need more, I got. Your arm's mine, you.
Wow, you've already passed the background check, so.
I just wanted it for the record. Didn't want anyone thinking we're trying to hide anything.
Anything else?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you again for stepping forward.
You're gonna take the next two together?
Yep.
Could you, could you separate those? Oh, sure. Um, make a motion to appoint Tom Burnham to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, regular member for a term expiring July thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nice to see Tom Burnham stepping forward.
Agreed.
All in favor? Opposed?
Make motion to appoint Jeffrey Ostrout to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for a term expiring on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Right?
Um. Since you signed, you think you work as a reference document?
I signed what?
There's a reference Keith Yagelos as reference on here.
Oh, that must be, I don't, I don't wanna say it's a joke, but I wouldn't be his reference. I I, the reason, the reason is my personal feelings about people are, shouldn't cloud my decision to appoint someone. To board a commission. So I have personal feelings. I'm gonna abstain because I don't wanna vote yes. But I'm also not gonna vote no because I don't think I should bring my personal decision about somebody into the issue of whether they should serve on the board. That's my reason.
And I would have an issue with this. Not that I don't have an issue with the individual, but I have an issue with somebody's name on here that. Is not willing to give my reference.
Yeah, that has to be some kind of joke because I, people know I would never give them a reference if they put it on there.
Well, you know that. I don't know that.
I'm just saying it. That's, that's, that's not a serious reference.
I mean, I take what we do serious, but so if this is not for a joke, I don't find it funny.
Um, so the most, the the appointments are completed. The. Next item involves the town planner, Director Calabrese.
Did you follow?
We did, yeah.
In that, that's a good one.
Um, for for a discussion on the Capital Region Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan Updates. Ruth, the floor is yours.
So here tonight, the adoption of the twenty.
Can I suggest you, if you, you can't be seen on the camera at all where you're standing? If you stood in the middle at the table or maybe you changed here. Oh, now you can be changed. Okay. Right? Okay. No.
Happens. I saw myself in there.
No, it's just the.
You're there. It's just the banner.
Right. Um. So I'm here seeking adoption of the twenty twenty-four, twenty, went to twenty twenty-nine update of the Capital Region Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. The town adopted the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four plan. Um, and we've been through the process of updating the East Windsor section of the plan. Um, with the Capital Region drug and CERCA, which is the Connecticut Institute for Climate Resiliency and Adaptation. Um, they've merged some climate resiliency into the plan. Uh, going. And um. It's pending adoption by the thirty-eight towns that are, that into that plan. And if you don't adopt the plan, your town is not eligible for FEMA mitigation funding. So. Um, it's important for us to do that. I'm not sure if you want any additional background on the plan itself.
Sure. Oh, so then I think um, when East Windsor is highly susceptible to um flooding. Especially on the Connecticut River based on its geography and and you've been part of a number of meetings to describe that for us. And we've had a town expert tell us about that also and the impacts on on Warehouse Point. It seems that this, what's happening here is two things. Not only the adoption of the new plan. Which is a continuation of the old plans, but also recognition that climate change is impacting the frequency and severity of storms. And it seems that the, that the change here is is largely in part to um, to put climate change elements into the um. Into the uh. Goals and objectives of the plan. Is that correct? Is the town expected to, a part of this to undertake specific steps to address climate change? Or is this just a recognition that climate change is affecting these various things?
It's a recognition that the changes, the natural, the weather changes, sea level rise. Uh, resulting in increased risks that should be adapted to and for. So um. They've come up with five goal statements. That categorize what they already have for nine goals. So they kind of chunk them. So any goals that we come up with are addressing. Very similar risks that were already being addressed. They're just which climate change bucket do they fall into? So I can tell you the five um goal statements are ensure that critical facilities are related. With special attention to shelters and police centers. Address risks associated with extreme heat events, especially as they interact with other hazards. Reduce flood and erosion risk by reducing vulnerabilities and consequences. Even as climate change increases frequency and severity of floods. Reduces losses, reduce losses from other hazards. Um, invest in resilient corridors to ensure people and services are accessible during floods. And that that development along those borders is resilient over the long term. So those are the, that, those are the banner statements that.
Right.
Hurricanes, tornadoes, um, severe winter storms, they, they fall into.
So it sounds like our obligation as a town is to um provide um. Those things to address the flooding issues or the or the intensive heat issues, et cetera. But I mean, my feeling is that addressing climate change should be happening at the state or federal level, not locally. Not in terms of providing services, but in addressing the things that might cause or affect climate change. It sounds like what you're saying is, is that that's what we're doing here. We're, we're responsible for addressing the impacts. But we're not, we're not management, but we're not responsible for mitigation.
So this is part of the Capital Region Council of Governments um mitigation plan. There's a component of this for each of the forty-one towns that are in their, their service area. Um, what they are doing is they're asking municipalities to adopt the mitigation plan. Um, underlying, the underlying plan and the municipally specific ver uh pieces of that. And then CROG uh is able to use that approval to go after grant funds to implement the provisions of this. If it's not part of their adopted plan, they don't go after the grant funding because it doesn't meet what their strategic plan is. So we are part, we're, we are constituents and partners of CROG as they seek to to address the points that are outlined in here and find funding for.
So I appreciate the clarification. So in terms of mitigation, it will come through grants if anything.
Correct.
But our town is not gonna be responsible for, for paying for costs for mitigation for climate change. Okay. But thank you.
And if you're interested in some of those goals, it's on page ten, the uh supporting material. But they are, um, you know, hiring electrical engineer to complete an electrical upgrade and wire the high school most permanent gen, emergency generator. It's, it's on that level and it's. Blood mitigation. Um. Some of it is. Open space, you know, kind of near towards if it's floods. Maybe we should get that out of the development area or um. If it has some attenuation value, that kind of thing. Um. So it's, you're certainly not trying to combat climate change, but. Pardon, be ready for managing risks associated.
I see that there's things here about the pump stations and ensuring that the pump stations are not gonna be susceptible to flooding. Um, and that they're also, they're upgraded and absolutely can resist. Cause I know, but pump station's flood and it burns out, could burn out motors. It could burn out all the infrastructure in there, leaving people without. Ability to use the sewer system for a long time. So um, I, I, I read through the whole thing. I, I support the goals. I think they're good. Thank you.
Um, um, I read the whole thing also and I agree, but I have some things that I think need to be addressed. On page one, um, on the critical facilities, we've got Saint John's Church. It's my understanding, Saint John's Church is up for sale. Um, so I'm questioning whether or not we should leave that in there. Um, since this is gonna go, what year, twenty?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty twenty-nine. Um.
Oh, yeah, it hasn't been sold. So do you take it off before it's sold or?
Do they know that they're on here? Have they agreed to it?
I didn't know it was widely known that Saint John's was for sale, so probably not.
Um, so I would question whether or not that's viable, but do as you may. I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, while we're on there, Kettle Brook is also now Fresh River Healthcare.
Oh, true.
Sorry.
And touch points at Chestnut is I care at.
That's I care. Um, and then, uh, you know. Got a couple more things.
Well, the critical facility should also include Park Hill Complex.
It should Park Hill and Spring Village. I was gonna get that later on down the road, but yeah, it should be there too, Park Hill and Spring Village. Those are the elderly complex in town.
For spring when?
And the other thing, um, as we go on page three, we've got the Scott Hall Pump Station. Um, do we wanna call that the pump, Scott Hall Pump Station or do we address a new name to it since it's no longer?
Yeah, I'm honestly not certain how easy it would be for us.
Cause this is not our document. Oh, this with FEMA review?
Pending adoption.
Don't, I'll just set my mouth on it. It's not.
No, no, don't, yeah.
I'll wait till next time.
Uh, questions or comments?
Well, the biggest one is five years from now, people aren't gonna know who Wu Dan is.
She's still gonna be here.
I know that, but you know, uh, my husband wouldn't know who Wu Dan was if he was looking at this. So it should be first names and last names to be consistent everywhere.
What are you talking about?
All, all of these, did you see them? All of these things here, in here. Uh, you got Lynn Norton, you've got Roger Hart, you got Roger Hart. Um, and then you've got, um, it's unclear Wu Dan, and that just keep going on all through the document, Wu Dan, Wu Dan, um. Just if we're gonna have a document, it should have first and last name so that when people reading it, they know who people are. And if they don't, they can look and look them up.
To Ruth's point though, this is not our document.
I know.
So.
And that's why I said, I'm just be quiet.
The um. My name is in full. If not in the. Also that, yeah. I know the notes, the changes that were offered.
And then I have a question in column. Not that it matters, but somewhere is in here, it said that it was approved. The last one, that a generator was purchased for the high school. And they were just waiting to install. And then further on in the document, it says that it needs to be purchased and installed. So I'm not sure what it is.
There's a fourth generator that was purchased.
Yeah, it's Scott Hall right now.
Which is where the goal of, they can't connect to either the middle school and the high school. So they need that electric.
Well, you can't change the verbiage anyway, so it's your point.
So this is CROG's document. Been, you said it's been reviewed by by FEMA?
Yeah.
Um. So we need to. Yes.
In the, in twenty twenty-nine, when this comes up again, how can we make corrections like we offered tonight before it's too late? But I'll take, I'll, I'll take. Those revisions and, okay, I, I can get them to the folks over there. You know, as a placeholder. I have a file that has this.
Did you have more to present or can I ask a question? So on uh. I don't know what page it is. Forty-four in my computer.
That one? Like it is.
Thirty.
Page thirteen.
Um, is the environmental justice rank? And I see like the town is kind of everything west of the Scannick River. Um, it seems to be a ten and everything east is somewhere around a five. How, how does that affect us? What, what, what does that use to calculate?
They add, it's now that we have the environmental justice communities, of which East Windsor is not in at this. But in this study. They categorized portion of the town to be in that. This. It probably gets us into a group of the cohort that did receive a fund.
So, so the west part of East Windsor is a ten, which would be, I guess, the least environmentally justice?
It's probably the area of higher concern.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a density thing. Density and socioeconomic.
I'm here, Roger. You're on your own.
I got a house in there.
Let's write up that one over there.
Um, so we do need to move a certification, a certificate of adoption, which we can adopt by reference if you wanna move that forward. And then we need to transmit it back to CROG.
You accept a certification, adoption of the town of East Windsor Board of Selectmen. A resolution adopting the Capital Region Natural Hazard Mitigation. Except the certification, adoption of the town of East Windsor, supportive selection, a resolution adopting the capital region natural hazard mitigation plan update dated twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine.
Is there a second?
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? It's okay. Thank you, Ms. Calabres. I was going to ask that we table nine B. Until after executive session?
Table agenda item nine B until after executive session.
All in favor? Posed? Nine C, Mr. Norton, you're up. That is the uniform rental recommendation.
All in black and white there.
Yeah, it's great. Pretty straightforward.
Are we currently involved with uniform rentals?
Yes, absolutely. It's part of their, it's part of their contract.
Who wears them? What do they look like?
They did, well, depends. Some of them wear jeans. And some of them wear lower pants. They don't hardly any of them like wearing the actual blue work shirt. They're more, a couple do, like the mechanic does, and and a few guys like those long sleeve or short sleeve. But most of the gentlemen wear the safety green T-shirts. Long or short sleeve, and then when it becomes winter, they move into the hooded sweatshirts or jackets. So we used to provide everything for everyone. And it used to really bother me that we paid for a uniform service for things that nobody used. So I have come to actually might be close to half and half. Not everybody even uses the full uniform service as far as cleaning or whatever laundry. A lot of them wash their own pants. They they just don't.
Yes.
But all the contract says is we will supply uniforms. And so, but I I brought, I told them. I will do whatever you want. You can have them laundered, but I think more people don't want them laundered than do. The mechanic likes them laundered because he gets kind of greasy and yucky. And there's a few guys that that really get into their work and get a little crappy, but other than that, I I think most, most of the gentleman just take the pants. And we purchase the shirts, T-shirts and stuff like that. And they take them home and laundry.
So what did you find when you went out to bid?
Well, I I didn't really go out to bid.
Well, you you scoured the the bid list, state the list?
And it's actually I I I went and searched the DAS website for a contract and found the, they kind of piggyback somehow with Sourcewell. It's actually the Sourcewell contract, but listed on the DAS. So that's Universe. So I contacted them as well. But I also, you know, I had the proposal from our current provider. And I got two other proposals from other local providers. Then I had the Universe, which is the Sourcewell contract. And there was nobody didn't touch that. So I probably didn't have to go search out other prices, but I don't think it hurts to check. It's a quick phone call, email, they call you, they visit and so my recommendation is there to go with Universe. I actually emailed you a copy of what they're, I don't know if you've got it today, but I have.
Yeah, their contract?
Yeah, this is what their agreement looks like. And they've actually this is just agreeing to the individual cost per item. If we, if we sign this and we're going with them. They will come to the public works facilities with what they call fit kits. And they will resize everybody, fit everybody for whatever they're getting and supply the uniforms and we'll have to turn the other ones back. Hopefully they'll let us keep them for a little bit so they're not running low. I'll work that out. Because it'll take a few weeks to get that's where I am.
Questions or comments? Keith?
Len, the the prices look great. You you obviously came back with a proposal that is pretty affordable for the town. So so I I I'm going to support it and thank you for bringing this to us.
Other comments?
Just for clarification, on the pick on his denim jeans. One employee wants denim jeans. And they're going to get loving pairs issued to them?
No, well. The mechanic will because he uses the full service. The gentleman that do not utilize the full laundering service get five pair of pants, whatever whatever they're choosing is. Because they're washing them at home.
Well, that's I I just, I'm just going to use denim jeans as an example. One employee can get eleven issued, issued to him. Three dollars nineteen cents a week times fifty two weeks times ten pairs. Because I already did the three forty one for that week. Ends up to eighteen hundred and twenty four dollars a year. Isn't it cheaper just to buy them ten pairs of jeans?
I've offered to do that. The contract says we will provide a service, so.
Okay.
I have offered to purchase jeans for those who don't. But that's not the universe contract either, is it?
So is this here, so back to the denim, you said yes and no on the eleven issue, so if we're going to have a contract, what is it? Is it yes, loving pairs? For that one person that wants.
What, what we, well. The proposal the proposal that Jason has to sign is basically that whoever takes what these are the per unit costs for for the item. Okay, the
So how do we budget for it if we don't know how many?
The denim jeans are twenty nine cents a pair.
That's a, that's a monthly charge, right?
But if if you look at the current contract, do that, I think it's forty. But there's only there's really only there's only three or four people that actually get the eleven. They need the eleven because if they're wearing a pair a day and they're turning five in, they gotta have something to wear. And then there's the one extra pair to in case something happens. I've never dealt with these people. We'll see. They seem very nice.
And how many employees you got working for this?
There are ten who get the for a very long time.
Yeah, you are up to eleven though.
We're up to eleven.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
I want to make before you that there was one that says a three percent automatically at the end of the five year contract.
It's a five, it's a five year contract with a three percent escalator per year. That's the universe one.
Actually, they started at five percent. And I negotiated.
And then every year it's an additional three. So by the end of the five year contract, it's fifteen.
Well, it's three percent per year. The current contract that we were under is four percent.
I don't care about the current contract. This is this contract. This contract says they are proposing a five year term with a three percent increase annually. So you start at five percent and then twelve seventeen.
Yeah.
Start up at five and then three percent annually. Okay.
No, they started with the five.
No, we start, they started, when we started our little negotiation, they wanted a five percent increase per year. And I got it down to three percent per year. So the five is gone. It's three percent every year. And if you look at the, if you look at the actual agreement I hand to Jason, it says three percent there per year.
Jason, do you need a motion?
I do.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the for select in, selectmen to enter into an agreement with Universe Corporation for the rental of uniforms for Department of Public Works.
Discussion. All in favor? opposed? Thank you. You're up. At least I put them next to each other. At least I put the two things next to each other. Could have made your way.
The only thing you could have done better was make it first. Second. Okay, the next thing was the on-call surveying and engineering purposes. I have the again, it's a memo there with my recommendation and I attached all the responses to the RLP that we advertised for. And based upon we put it out for surveying and engineering services. We really don't use a lot of engineering services. We use mostly just survey services. So I mean, once in a while we may ask for a little help with something, but generally it's we we need base mapping to do the projects we're doing. Like my tronley robe that we just finished and we're going to start the water main with the middle school next weekend. So basically they go out through base mapping, supply me with a base map that I can design whatever it is I'm doing on. And depending on whether it's going out the bid or we're just, you know, getting proposals or what have you, I will either draw it on a map myself or what I call redlining on the map and have their drafting person CAD drafted. CAD drafting a little better than So my recommendation is since basically the people were still using because they had the best price for the service that I use the most. And they're in town, they're a taxpayer. And they're, it needs me who uses them because if I need to go to the office for something, it's five minutes for me. So
So just for clarification, because somebody's going to read this heading, engineering service, and they're going to say, don't we have an so we get it, just for clarification.
Jason, class.
Yes, you may.
So Len, I I went through the all the bid sheets. And there's another company called Freeman. And Freeman is, has the same two hundred and five dollars per hour for the two man crew. And I noticed you wrote we primarily use two man crews and you were just talking about the surveying. But Freeman beats all the other ones in every single category. The principal cross, senior technician, one man survey crew. Project engineer, engineer, ad technician, clerical and all their print costs. And I looked them up and they're a minority owned business. And they they say on their website, these, they're a black, African American owned business. They have a number of good people on their teams. And they have done work throughout Connecticut. They listed a number of their projects here on their website. And so I have two concerns. One is, it may be a possible solution, or I want to ask a question. So I'm concerned that we're really not selecting the lowest bidder for the work. Because they're not the lowest bidder. Russo's not, except that, and they're equal in that one category, but every other category Freeman is lower. So we're not, not doing what we're, what we're supposed to do. And if there's a reason why any percent J R Russo doesn't really have quality work. But we don't have a reason to think that Freeman does bad work, right? So, so, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to see someone down the road or somebody saying, hey, you didn't pick the lowest bidder, you picked the not lowest bidder, you picked the local bidder, which we're really not supposed, I don't think we have a bid preference for local bidders unless we're within five percent, I think, ten, ten percent. Right? I think these are outside of that ten percent range. Is there any way we can hire two firms to do work and then we'll have experience with two engineering and surveying companies and then we'll have a backup if we want to change in the future, we can look at it. Is that a possibility? Is anyone interested in that? Because someone could point out the fact that we didn't go with the lowest bidder and we didn't and they're not within the ten percent exception.
I, I think the policy also gives us, if in the instances where it's a local bidder, I think we got the, we can give the local bidder the opportunity to match.
Right. So that's a good idea. I like that. If they're willing to match, then then the town isn't paying the higher prices on the bid. I'm I'm good with that. Because that gets past the issue of, oh, you're not going with the lower bidder. Right? In this case, they happen to be a minority owned business, but that's besides the point. They're still a lower bidder. So can I make a suggestion that we if we pick Russo, I'm suggesting to, to for selectmen, if we pick Russo, we require them to match the 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 bids from Freeman. If they're willing to. And if not, then we go with Freeman. Which is the lowest bidder.
Just so you know, like what we do on, we we have many on-call contractors. We have excavators, we have plumbers, electricians. We certainly could put Freeman on the list as a, you know, it's an on-call surveyor, whatever. I mean, we could certainly have two, as you originally suggested. We we can ask Russo to match the lower prices. And whether or not he does, we can certainly still have two that we could call if for some reason. Excavating contractors, we we have
Three?
I believe three, yes. Because if we need something done like next week or whatever, and and low person can't do it, we just go to next and and we need, because we need to get it done. And we know what their costs are and they're they're close. I mean,
I think it depends on on what work you're doing. Because if you're doing the two man crew, they're the same. But if you start involving engineering, they're they're pretty different. Personally, I like what you just suggested. Because then you have options in terms of availability and you have options in terms of cost. And you can maximize the financial benefit for the town. But also have the ability to call in somebody if someone's not available or otherwise. But it doesn't get us outside of our bidding regulations and rules if we did that. But I I like that 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 option. And and in that case, I wouldn't care whether Russo matches the bid or not personally because because you have the option of going with the lowest bidder. If if you're able to, you certainly want to save the town money. And then we get experience at the end of the day with another company. So we have some planning for the future in case you want to make a change. That would be my suggestion to the, to the board. That we, that we selected two at their current prices. And and let the director of public works manage the allocation across the two companies.
I don't have a problem with it.
Well, when you do the quick math, you use ten percent. And then you look at clerical from sixty five to eighty five. I think the overall contract, not line by line is in line with what needs to be done. Where I see the decreases in the reimbursable expenses.
Oh, and honestly, we
Do you even use that?
For me, Russo is local for emergencies and he's there. I have no problem switching with other companies or any company. for emergencies and he's there. I have no problem putting this other company or any company um that does foresting appropriate on. Um, but how often are we gonna need a three man survey crew? But that's the only thing this other company doesn't allow us, doesn't have any three man servant. And that can be a problem if you don't deal with it.
That's up, that's up to the project. If they need three or two, one.
So if we hire this guy and we need a three man crew, he doesn't have one available. We hire this company, then all are bases. That's how I look at it. Um so and I don't have a problem with Freeman and all of those. Who people have working from, we don't work, look in the business, like we people are all humans, so. But he's local. So and I always like to shop local and do local whenever I can. That's just a personal opinion.
Basically, I make a motion.
Please.
I'll make a motion that we uh that we direct the, the first selectmen to enter, to accept the bids for Freeman and JR Russo and then entering to contracts with the two firms for engineering and surveying services.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Uh, okay. We have um contracts for um the installation of the pickleball courts at Osborne Park and the basketball repairs at Osborne Park. The uh company that uh we're going with is the same one that we're using for the track. They are on the state bid list. Um, the I'm sorry, I'm sore as well. Um, the contracts have been reviewed by Pullman and Comley. Um, so they are ready to ready to go. The board is happy with them.
Ending.
Um, ending uh tennis courts um for the work on the two tension pickleball courts at Osborne Park. And repairs of the basketball.
Is there a second? And authorize my signature? Did you say that?
And authorize it shouldn't have thrown the first one.
Any discussion?
This is so the uh it looks like the first contract price for the well, the contract price, it looks like is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Which one?
The first one.
Which one's the first one?
Pickleball.
Pickleball?
It says pickleball courts. It also says um, right, pickleball courts are one twenty-five. That includes thirteen thousand dollars for site work. It says two being alternate. Is that thirteen thousand in addition to or? It's.
Part of the one twenty-five.
And then the second contract was for the tennis courts and that one is for um.
Thirty-eight.
Oh, it says total of uh thirty-eight, three, seven, six. Which is, which is the eleven five. That's it, didn't it, thirty-eight and change. Thanks.
Total cost, total cost, including the two edges.
Okay.
Further discussion? Motion has been made and seconded.
Could I amend that?
Sure.
I guess I can.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Um, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right.
Murray Technically resurfacing of the existing basketball court and installation of two new hoops. So.
I just want to make sure.
Can you reference that? Thank you.
When they go to resurface, somebody says, I said hoops.
Well, we are putting brand new hoops on there.
Yeah.
Thirty thousand dollar hoops. Yeah, right. Um all right. Chairman Baker. Um, this next one is pension item. You want to take a point?
Sure, uh, so I, I wasn't on the negotiating team for DPW contract, but our pension, but um, this is, this was approved by the four oh one A addendum change. Uh, that was approved by the changes uh in totality, just the uh public works employee contribution and town uh contribution. You can see they're highlighted in the packets. So the employee contribution goes to five and the town contribution goes to four and a quarter. Um, so this was approved last night and at the commission, at the pension board and we need to approve it here.
Yeah, and that goes retro back to July, uh, July first, twenty twenty-three. Any discussion?
I have something.
Sure.
So I'm not necessarily opposed to the change in the matching here. Um, I'm more talk, something more process oriented. Um I don't agree that the pension commission could be negotiated pensions, uh portions of with uh these are union members, I think that's within the charters. Um for what?
We did, I thought you said that they. It was the, it was the the team that was, I don't know who was on the team.
Yeah, so the um, the, the negotiating team negotiated the contract which included labor and pension. The pension board has to ratify the change to the plan, then the selectmen have to ratify the change.
So this, this was negotiated by the team, not the pension board.
Correct.
And it was by the team.
Correct.
We had just approved last night. Okay, so I just, that's good. I appreciate that. That's clarified. But I don't have a process issue. Thank you.
Uh, is there a motion on the table? I don't believe there is.
I guess I'll make the motion.
Go right ahead.
Uh, make a motion that we uh approve the four oh one A addendum for the Department of Public Works. For the Town of East Windsor defined contribution plan, plan number ten dash zero zero two seven.
Is there a second? Any discussion? In fact, I think they're required to vote for it because we're on the team that approved it. I think that's what the ground rules say.
Basically, just for the, for the public to understand, uh, just clarify the the changes here are the con- the uh the contributions made by the town, the maximum. The four oh one K. That's the changes.
The for specifically for public works and it brings them in line with the other bargaining units that either were like that or have been changed recently.
Right. And, and have uh, th- this is affects their hybrid plan. This is, this is the, the DC side of their, their DBDC hybrid.
Right, this is the uh the four oh one K matching for these are people.
Right, the de- the defined contribution side.
And what the town will match. So if the, if the town, town says matches five percent, uh, up to five percent, the first uh five percent contributions by the employees gets matched. Anything over five percent doesn't get matched.
No, that is not true. Um, so in the, in the defined benefit, defined contribution hybrid model, the uh employee, and there are several bargaining units that have this, but the employee is obligated to put in the employee's contribution. The town is, is obligated to put in the town's contribution. The employee cannot put in any more or less than that. They also have opportunities to invest their own money unmatched in almost all instances in a four fifty-seven plan. But with the, the hybrid DBDC, their defined contribution side, the high is the low. That is the number that you're putting in. That's it. They can't, they can't increase their contribution beyond what's in there.
Well, define, is this, this is related to pensions?
Yes.
So that's defined benefit.
No, defined benefit would be um, you get uh, you put in one point seven five percent of your salary, the town credits you two percent times your top three years, times your number of years, and that's what your benefit is regardless of how much you put in of that one point seven five percent. This is, you are going to put in that, that fixed percent and whatever the market does, the market does and good luck to you. It is, it is the four oh one K model for the private, for the public sector. Anything I missed there? All right. Uh, a motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm gonna ask that we postpone um our table nine G until after executive session. I moved. All in favor? Um, nine H uh will not have any action uh by the board of selectmen at this time. Um, so there's uh, that's, it's not gonna be uh tabled or postponed. It simply is going to not show up again for a lack of action um until and if the circumstances warrant it. Um, tax refunds. So there was, there was an amended version of this. It was provided when you all got here. What's this one?
The tax free funds totaling two thousand and eighteen dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Uh, all right, selectmen's reports.
On July eleventh, uh, East Windsor hosted State Controller Sean Scanlon at our senior center to discuss the Array RX Prescription Drug Discount Card Program, which provides Connecticut residents with savings of up to eighty percent, eight zero percent on a menu of medications. Thanks to Representatives Foster and Hall for joining us for that presentation. If anyone is interested in learning more about Array RX, information can be found at array, array RX card dot com. That's A R R A Y R X C A R D dot com. The town's summer camp program is in full swing and I was happy to join our campers for the first storytime in the park of the season. Um, that was back on July fifteenth. Um, the Parks and Rec Department coordinates a host of guest readers to join campers for storytime and to read books relevant to what it is that they do in public, in public service. Um, so this year I read books about democracy and volunteerism and asked the campers about what it is that they want to do to contribute to the community when they grow up. Um, spoiler alert, there are a lot of four-year-olds who want to be police officers. So go, go figure. Um, they've heard about the, the wonderful programs the police department is running for kids and they're already psyched about that. Um, and actually, the, the following week I was uh followed by Officer Sanchez and Lady the Station Dog. So I'm sure she was a much bigger hit than I was. Um, and speaking of the police department, the uh our local police department hosted a one-week statewide FBI N A uh youth leadership training session back in July. Congratulations to Deputy Chief Murphy and to Chief Carl for their hard work uh setting that up. Thank you to all the guest speakers who shared their experience and every best wish to the seventeen participants from around Connecticut who came and participated in that week-long um opportunity. It was really cool to see the impressive uh young men and women. This is just another example of some of the really great things that are happening in our police department and why when I talk to people around the state of Connecticut, I say that we have the best police department in the state. Um, on August fifth, Representative Foster and Chief Carl hosted the Connecticut State Police for a presentation on instances of fraud, scams and identity theft issues affecting seniors in Connecticut. Presentation was well attended and thought provoking and we were happy to host it. National Night Out was supposed to be this past Tuesday. Um, but it was unfortunately delayed due to inclement weather. So that's going to be rescheduled for uh Friday, September sixth. Um, which actually could be kind of a better opportunity than doing it on a Tuesday, doing it on a Friday night in September. Uh, hopefully that'll um encourage more participation. Uh, it's gonna be a lot of fun. We're gonna have um all of the same community partners, fun, food trucks and live music. So encourage any, anybody to bring their kids, bring themselves and come have a good time. Over the last several weeks, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Tujin and I, with members of the Board of Education, have done school visits in a number of communities to assess how they tackle facilities needs in their public schools. So far, we've visited schools in South Windsor, East Granby, Canton, and soon we'll be visiting Burlington. This is all part of working towards a global solution for our aging school buildings in East Windsor. Um, and the work has been done so far through the Board of Education's Facilities Committee. Um, but there will be ample opportunity for the public to participate in the decision-making process as we continue to move forward. We are continuing to work on the waterline expansion project that will run city water into Park Hill and the School Hill neighborhood with design work substantially finished. Um, yesterday I met with officials from the Connecticut Department of Transportation along with Representative Foster and Senator Anwar um to enlist their help in the final steps, but there being the DOT's uh help in the final steps of the design review. Um, that because we have to cross the waterline at some point underneath a railroad line, um, that is under the jurisdiction of DOT. So they need to make sure that they're satisfied with the sign-off too. Once the DOT review process is complete, that project is ready for the bid documents to be uh compiled and for the bid to be um put out. So we're, we're right at the, the five yard line with that. Um, just a reminder, the Styles Bridge at the bottom of Old Ellington and Mahoney Roads will be closed uh now through September twenty-seventh. Traffic will be detoured down Amelia Road or Route one forty. Um, and already just this week, I've learned how many times a day I used to go over the Styles Bridge and how inconvenient it is not to have it. Um, but the end result is gonna be, we're gonna have a brand new bridge. It's gonna be safe and last for, you know, several more generations. So um, the final product will be worth the inconvenience. Um, and finally, I want to remind everybody that the East Windsor Ambulance Association is holding a series of free trainings over the next uh couple of months for CPR training, QPR Suicide Intervention Training and First Aid Awareness. And if anybody's interested in taking any of those free training opportunities, you can sign up by uh calling the East Windsor Ambulance during normal business hours. Murray?
Yeah, I want to apologize. I have um not attended any meetings this past month. Um but I'm scheduled to get back on track um starting this week. Um, so going forward, you'll have um updated information and I'll try to hit highlights from the previous couple of months that I haven't reported and I'll bring those um to light hopefully next meeting. Um, but in regards to your um Styles Bridge comments, I agree when it's completed, it's going to be very intense. But in the meantime, there's been a lot of comments and a lot of concerns about lack of signage on various streets. Um, today I had somebody call me and said, you know, I went down two streets. Um, there was no sign saying that the road was closed and it wasn't Mahoney Road either, and I couldn't get down. Um, because Scannick is closed. So um, I think we gotta look. I've.
Chief Carl and I, I see uh a number of calls, that concern constituents though, as commissioners. Uh, each time they actually, I think, for the project. They're gonna have bare personnel who are having the jet signage on the actual state roads. I guess some of the. And one of our.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Deputy.
I knew you'd be on top of it. I, I would be administered by any point at all. Thank you.
Uh, Al?
Okay, so the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, I just mentioned it because I had mentioned it in my last report. They did close the public hearing on the soil uh reclamation facility that was proposed on uh one forty and they did approve it. So uh, that's done. Um I think the only other thing of importance that I, that I would add is the, like I mentioned earlier, the pension board met last night because we got the performance review. Um, and so for, you know, as of June thirty of this. Port oil had returned ten percent, which is uh pretty good. Um as always, I had mentioned, because it's always a concern to me, contributions for that period were two hundred and thirty-two thousand. So that's the employee contribution part, basically. And withdrawals were uh one million, two hundred and one thousand. So um we are living off it, the market appreciation really, which was three point three million for the period. Um, and it, it is very well managed and the guy, the guys are really thinking ahead, but um, you know, it just shows the importance of making sure that everybody's putting in what they need to put in if we're gonna make this viable long-term. Um and the other thing I would add is they see more volatility. Of course, it's probably dropped a little bit, still over forty million, but uh it's a little less than ten percent so far because of what's happened since June thirty. But they are, you know, expecting volatility up into the election and then they expect the year to end on an up note. So um, and they expect the economy to be, you know, pretty solid too. So they're not seeing any emergencies. Everything's looking pretty good as far as that goes. Um, we also reviewed the investments every quarter of they have a, a gentleman that goes through and tracks all the investments to make sure they're healthy, you know, to meet certain criteria. Um, they're up for review to be removed. Um, so employees aren't basically investing in garbage investments. So they're just keeping up on that and everything looks really good. Everything's solid. Um, people are spread out through a number of the different investments, so it's looking pretty good there too. So a lot of adoption by the employees um of the program and so everything looked good and we'll see again in three months. Um, of the program and so everything looked good and we'll see again in three months. That's all I have.
Sheriff.
On Monday night, I attended the Warehouse Point Fire District meeting. Sixty-eight falls in the month of July and the Fire Marshal's Office completed twenty-two inspections. Which generated eleven re-inspections on the Warehouse Point side of town. The district had forty-eight thousand, five hundred and one dollars and thirty-three cents that wasn't spent last fiscal year, which has now been moved into their fund balance. Their fund balance is at sixteen point nine percent of their budget, which is acceptable according to their policy. Last meeting, I reported on the damage to Marine one thirty-eight, which occurred by rocks in the river while out on a call. Chief Barton was able to file an insurance claim and a check was awarded in the amount of twenty-six thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. Um, so the commission voted to purchase two Yamaha wave runners that will be efficient when responding to a call in the river. The fire department has hired two service maintainers, they have completed their orientation and are now working on ships. Um, and there is a drone project underway and six members have enrolled in pilot training. The drones are currently at the police department, but the fire department is hoping to have the unit stationed at the firehouse. So they can have access for deployment in an emergency. And the fire department hopes to be more involved as this project moves forward, and that's all that I have.
Thank you, Keith.
Um, just one thing, the Planning and Zoning Commission continued their public hearing on its proposed tax amendments uh to August thirteenth at six thirty P M. Um. There are a number of uh. Um, regulations concerning parking of vehicles and driveways, parking of commercial vehicles, parking recreational vehicles. Um, having chickens on your property, um. Temporary events on properties, uh duration of temporary events on on properties in town. So if, and and so it had, some of these have the potential to affect a lot of people in town, um, they've already had a lot, quite a bit of public input. If anyone uh wants to get the tax amendments to take a look, they're available online. And they should uh remember that's August thirteenth at six thirty P M, Planning and Zoning meeting, that's it.
All right, um, we're going to turn now to the second public participation of the evening. Same rules as before, I'll first provide anybody who's here in the room an opportunity to um address the board and then I'll give the same opportunity to anybody who is online. Is there anybody here who would like to address the members of the board of select? Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Well, Anderson, eighty-nine May Street, Brooklyn. Uh, the Planning and Zoning. The meeting on the thirteenth. Public hearing, there is a legal notice out for a public hearing on tax amendment on the twenty-seventh. I don't know if that's different or the same. Um, but it's one of the most confusing things ever to deal with planning.
Finding me.
Finding documents and understand I'm doing what. I'm just pointing that out, we have a lot of fun. Trying to find things that relate to what, so we can be prepared prior to a meeting. So I'm confused now because. My understanding is that the meeting is going to be on the twenty-seventh of August. As opposed to the thirteenth. Uh, rude left on the jury, okay, that's fair. I guess I'll find.
Yeah, they did move it. To the twenty-seventh?
Believe so, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
No, I'm not either, the whole.
They haven't, they have a meeting scheduled. At the, at the last meeting, they spoke.
I know what they said.
They said it'd be August thirteen.
Yeah.
And there is a meeting scheduled for August thirteen.
A hearing or meeting?
They haven't, they haven't posted there each other.
I know, and I get a little frustrated by some of this, now I'm not criticizing. It's just a frustration trying to keep up.
Well, there, can I speak? There was an issue with people not able to get texts or meetings. I spoke to her after one of the meetings when it was brought to my attention via somebody that sent me a message, um. There was a problem with the link, that's been corrected, so if you get the, um, you got it pulled up there, um. Keith, if you pull up. The agenda, on top of the agenda.
Yeah.
They have the link now, it's put on there, so you should be able to just go to that. Agenda, click on to that link and get the information for that meeting.
And I speak my, we can know this, it says on. Fifth day, August twenty-seventh, it's six thirty, there'll be a public hearing and the tax amendments, so.
I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
I'm just bringing it up because it's a concern. I have the information for the twenty-seventh.
Oh, that says as to the. Eight seventeen planned commercial development district, E C D.
That's different.
That's different.
Good.
That's not the tax amendments that they were that are on the online as to those other things, which I think are still on the thirteenth.
I'll do more research, thank you, I just. Trying to figure it out.
You could always ask if they could keep it open. For further research and keep it open to the twenty-seventh. You could always ask that.
Changes, I'm trying to understand.
I don't think they'll finish anywhere.
Is there any other public comment? Is there anybody online who would like to address the members of the board? Okay. Um, it's. We will have an executive session, um, it will include um the Chief of Police, the Deputy Chief of Police and Attorney Brian McCann. Um, could I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'm moving.
All in favor?
Um, so the one that says um. Yaski versus uh East Windsor, I think they should say Wolf or Sword versus East Windsor. Oh, maybe. Yaski was kind of upset that. Said Yaski versus East Windsor, and the second thing is I'm going to recuse from the. From that item, which I believe should say Wolf or Sword versus East Windsor.
Fair enough. Uh, we are in executive session at eight twenty-five P M. It is ten fifteen, we're out of executive session, uh we're going to return now to the call of the agenda and take up agenda item. Nine B, discussion of the one hundred Mill Pond Road tax appeal. Uh, Selectman Muska.
Accept the tax settlement between the town of East Windsor and Mill Pond Limited Partnership as discussed in executive session.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So carried. Um, I don't believe there's any further business to come before the board tonight, so a motion to adjourn would be in order. Second, motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned at ten sixteen P M.